Recording.
Hey, everyone, and welcome to the March 7th Borgsville Board of Education meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Go call the board of trustees while my fellow board members are present this evening. For the good of the order, for discussion, does anyone have anything they'd like to say this evening? Okay, very well then, we'll move on. For just a little communication, or should we move with David's up first?
You want to do that first?
Yeah, okay. I think what we'll do, pardon us, change in agenda, but we do have, we do have a representative from Patricia Fahy's office here today, Alyssa Kane. And thank you for coming this evening, and we'll put you first so that you don't have to stay at home evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for welcoming me. My name is Alyssa Kane, and I'm chief of staff to Patricia, Assemblywoman Patricia Fahy. She sends her sincere regrets that she couldn't be with you tonight, especially because of the New York State budget is so positive for education this year. This would have been the year she would have loved to celebrate that with you. As many of you know, she lost her son to a 20-month battle with cancer last week. And so she is with family in Chicago. So I just wanted to, and many of you have sent sincere condolences, and it's been quite an incredible experience. So thank you for that. So the good news is that the budget is flush with education funding, which shall make your, should make your deliberations much easier. And she was delighted to support that. So as you know, the governor has come out with the budget, and now the Assembly and the Senate are working on their one-house bills. So in her one-house bill request, that should come out probably in the middle of next week. So we'll kind of see where the negotiation is. But there's a, in this year, there's a $2.1 billion increase in education aid. Foundation aid is fully funded. And specifically, there's $100 million over two years for mental health programs, based grant programs. I'm certain that you're all involved with that important work. And the current statutory formulas have been increased. And so that looks to be about 5.9% increase. Pre-school funding remains, will continue at $952 million. And the budget provides for free meals for all students regardless of backgrounds through 20, all through 22. So overall, the governor's budget investments in pre-K through K look very promising. Specifically, the Assemblywoman's been very interested in making sure that we have pre-K transportation in the budget. She actually singled that out in her budget letter to the speakers. So we are monitoring that and hoping that that happens. And she's also been a strong supporter of electric school buses, both for assistance from school, for school districts for purchasing and for leasing. So that's kind of the scope of that. I am happy to take your questions, and if I can't answer them, we have a wonderful team who would certainly get back to you.
Any questions?
No questions, but thank you for coming. This is the first time since I've been on board and been head of the representation of some of the Fahy's come.
She's come.
Oh, she usually has, she usually does come herself.
Oh, you're most welcome. Schools, you know, she started her, you know, career, her elected career as a school board member. So it's incredibly near dear to her heart, and especially during this time when she was a huge Albany High School supporter, and they were huge supporters of her children. So public education is her number one, along with environmental issues. Some of her most important concerns. And if she was here, she'd probably ask you, what are some of the most pressing issues that you're seeing that you might want to see addressed on a statewide level? You're welcome to tell me now, or to, I'd be happy to schedule, I also do her scheduling. So schedule a time for you to meet with her in the near future to share some of those.
Please extend that condolences again.
We certainly welcome that. Yeah, yeah, life is curious, isn't it?
I'll state that on a legislative action, Assemblywoman Fahy's been doing everything that we've asked for and more, and has been very supportive of the mental health supports, the environmental issues that are going on in school districts, and making sure that school districts are fully funded as we will be in the next few years. So, you know, the wish list has already been met, in my mind, and we greatly appreciate all the work that's been done.
She's been so concerned about the learning loss and really wanting to see, you know, ways that the legislature can be more supportive of those catch-ups. I know that school districts have really been working with summer programs, added educational programs, enrichment programs, ways to keep kids involved, and I'm sure that you've been involved with all of that, if there's anything we can do.
Yeah, one thing, we, I've been the recipient of pre-K dollars. And you can see that the continuation of that program is in the budget. And we would, I think we would very much be supportive of continuing.
Absolutely, and that's, she's kind of, she's super passionate about pre-K. And working on this pre-K transportation issue too, which will really help certainly, that those wraparound support. Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, Ms. Kane, for coming, and again, please piece on the board's deepest condolences.
I certainly will.
And thank you, Ms. Fahy, for her continual kind support to this district. Thank you.
Do let us know if needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to our agenda. We've added, again happily, opportunity for students to be heard. We encourage student input. I don't think we have any students here this evening. So we'll move on to opportunity for the public to be heard. Anyone who would like to make a public comment, please feel free to come up here, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to make any comments that you'd like.
Can I check and make sure that?
Oh, yes.
That the mic's on?
I don't know that I'm gonna need it. But.
Wait, hold on.
Matt Bergeron, President of the District.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bergeron.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the board for, over the last several months, working on, considering, and this evening I see now on the agenda, the question of whether or not to allow a student member to sit on the board in an ex officio capacity. I think that's a very important thing, particularly given the critical importance of civics knowledge and involvement. And I would like to thank the board for spending its time on that and putting that on the agenda this evening. Certainly, I do ask that you all vote in favor of that. Ultimately, all it does is give the members of the community the opportunity to answer, to, you know, give their feedback. Certainly something I'm going to be active in urging people to do. So thank you very much for that and for the time you've spent on that issue.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next.
Hi, I'm Anna Siano, I'm a parent of a preschool student. So I guess I could speak for a student. He, I just wanted to ask for your guys' support with incorporating or trying to incorporate the preschool students into the school. He is really excited and loves hearing about the book fair, but so sad that he can't go himself and has to rely on his sister to buy him a book or whatever. So I felt, you know, I kind of toyed with, you know, bringing this up tonight, but now that I hear that there's more funding in the budget for it, it's awesome. I just wanted to, you know, ask for your guys' for more support with that. I plan on calling Jeff to see how the parents can maybe, like, if we can bring them over to the school to go into the book fair. And it's all about, I mean, the preschool program's all about getting them ready to be a student. And I just kind of feel like they're not, they don't feel like they're part of the school community. They're kind of, I feel like they're kind of left out a little bit. So I just wanted to mention that quick, and, you know, I'll reach out to Jeff and find out how, you know, the parents can be more a part of that and, you know, work the device on that. Just wanted to mention that because now that we see there's more funding and it's going to continue, and it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to make any public comment?
Good evening. Everybody here?
Yep.
All right, perfect. First, let me just, my name's Vinnie Camesso, I have a son in the district. First, let me just say, it's very wonderful to see everybody's faces tonight. I'll start with that. I'd like to just make these comments in this message to the board tonight for historical reference. So with the governor's recent health guidance no longer requiring masks in school, I'm not taking this as a win because the mask requirement that is ending is currently only temporary. The state, the school, or the county, or even this board can choose to implement a mask mandate or any COVID mandates at any point in time. So before we do that, I'd like to ask that we need to make sure that these health guidance are logical, that there are prudent facts before implementing, and we need to understand the long and short-term positive and negative impacts of these mandates before they are implemented. To make an educated decision on moving forward. So the benefits must outweigh the risks. It was very interesting to me how other states with similar COVID cases, without the presence of a mask mandate, really had similar case lines, if you look at it. So this was never really about a mandate or a law. I believe in my, in my opinion, that you guys had the power the whole time to kind of unseat these unlawful orders. That is my opinion. I understand the position that you're in, I truly do, believe me, I get it. I know that each and every one of you is a community member in this very, very small town. And, you know, whether I see you on the soccer field, at the gym, at a firehouse, I talk to you on the phone, if I see him in the parking lot, I know each and every one of you members is part of this community, and I know you're just trying to do your best. But I'm a little disappointed that nobody on this board came forward in opposition in any of the guidance mitigation strategy. I know that you have to kind of act as a united front, I get that, but not one. Honestly, it's my opinion that we've been hoodwinked, we've been swindled, we've been lied to for two years, and no one on this board called out the state for that, no one. That's the part I struggle with to understand is why not? I'm just gonna do a little recap, and people in the audience may disagree with me, but I think it's my job as a community member and our job as a community member to hold those in elected position accountable. So the lockdowns were unsubstantiated, cloth masks are ineffective, tests are unreliable, and whether you agree with it or not, these vaccines are neither safe nor effective. I mentioned my first address to this board that we were an information war. A lot of you probably didn't understand what I meant by that. But the truth always has a way of prevailing, and it's starting to make its way forward. So more data is coming out that verifies everything I just stated, and all you have to do is look for it. I apologize for going over time. So my last message is this to the parents tonight. If you're listening, get involved. You no longer can rely on other parents or problems, or people to fix your problems, whatever you can do, but get involved. Everyone can do something, and everyone has to do something. Before it's absolutely too late, change starts here with the school board. Thank you for this time and opportunity, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Okay, well, thank you, everyone who did make comments, we appreciate them. Now we will move on to presentations. We already heard from Ms. Fahy's office, so we'll go right into the budget presentation. Thank you, Jim.
Yep, all right, so while Jim is setting up, I wanted to kind of preset the budget here a little bit, and I'm not doing a lot of fanfare when it comes to it, but, you know, I think it's important to note that over the summer, we did a survey of our community, and we've worked with our district advisory committee, and we are now working on creating a strategic plan. So we adopted a new vision and goals and changed that around. This budget does help set those pillars and foundations. So some of the things that were talked about were making sure that we have 21st century skills and buildings and facilities. So the technology aspect, making sure that our facilities are up to where they need to be, making sure that we're able to offer more electives and courses in keeping with our students, that is in there. Making sure that our curriculum programs are up to speed and that we're meeting the needs of our ever-changing community, that is in there. Making sure that we have professional development that teaches our, helps our teachers move forward to be able to help our students. Those are all things that are put into this budget for this year. And also in this budget is a set tone that we're going to continue to be able to make these improvements over the next three to five years ongoing. So it's not like you're doing this all at once, it's a measured plan for growth and improvement based off of what the strategic plan is turning out to be. Again, the strategic plan takes a good year to be able to do it and to do it right. We want to make sure that, you know, we're taking our time. But this budget does encapsulate many of the things that we've discussed, many of the things that our community has asked for. And, you know, it is present within this budget this year. So I just wanted to kind of state that prior to us going in, and I can explain that if you have questions of where this was or what did I mean by that when we're going through it. But I just did want to kind of just set that tone a little bit as we move forward. And then Jim can talk a little bit more about the money aspect of how this all works.
So since there has been only one significant change from the prior month and no change in the bottom line, I went with a slightly more streamlined presentation of only about six slides, not including the title on the final slide. So just some dates that we need to talk about. The expected adoption of the budget is April 4th at the next board meeting. Deadline for Board of Education petitions is the 18th. Actual ballots will be made available on the 19th. Technical deadline for approval of the budget is the 25th. Again, we're trying to do it three weeks earlier. May 9th, the district will hold the budget hearing, and May 17th is the actual vote. Benefits of our budget changes, and this has been added to a little bit. There were no number details added in the last month. So needed maintenance projects at all buildings, including security, network, fields, athletics maintenance, and camera upgrades for a total line item of $325,000, plus a $100,000 capital outlay project, which you're allowed to do every year at one building, which provides building aid. So that's what's put in there to make sure that we can address some of the deferred maintenance that we've had.
So I also want to state some of these things too, is, for example, infield mix, right? You think, oh, it's just clay mix that goes on our fields, it's a lot more than that. And actually, to do it right, it's about $80,000. So, you know, this upkeep and these things, this field maintenance, there are costs that are, go along with these things. Along in with this is our tennis courts, which we are getting prices on, but if you've gone out for a tennis court, it's, you know, there's giant cracks in it, our posts are falling over. And this is something that we're talking about having that done over. We're getting quotes, so we don't have exact prices on this. Our track, as per our strategic plan, that is now up for resurfacing, so that's another big-ticket item that has to be addressed in this. And then also our camera systems, we do want to make sure that our cameras are sound, a part of a good safety plan. There's a lot of things that go into safety. Having protocols are important, having checks are important. But having a camera system, A, for preventive measures, and also, B, that works so when you have an issue, you can go back and know that that camera's working, and you know within five minutes you can check it, is great. Because the other issue, the other hand of that would be, I have an issue that's going on in my building, and I have no camera to be able to tell me what happened. And we don't want that ever to happen because that would create more of a safety issue. So these are all things that are built in, and we're also trying, some of these, again, are also addable. So again, as the district, as I said already, anything that we do spend, we try to build aid off of that when possible. So cameras, for example, even though maybe it would cost, let's say, I'm rough estimating it, $40,000 for a camera, we could do that through Bosse's and get a 52% aid back down for the following year. So we would already then put another $20,000 into our line for '23, '24.
And also there are specific line items like Schedule L where it goes through building aid rather than Bosse's aid. So we'll maximize that as much as we possibly can.
So can I just say one thing? On the field and athletic maintenance, I feel really strongly that the district's obligation to provide, I hear that booster clubs are, you know, trying to get together the money to put, you know, play on fields. We need to prioritize for that field. And I feel like the work that we're going to do is needed, and we should be doing it, but to me, it's the beginning of this, this long. To me, in my opinion, in terms of things that we need to support athletic programs.
And that's why, while it's a one-time thing for this year, it will probably become a continuing item every year until we're caught up. So the second item is the new reading program at the elementary school, which does not have one currently, a standardized one, to aid in literacy levels for all students. And that will help when they get to the middle school and high school as well, eventually. And impacts all subjects, of course. Professional development for the program to make it effective, which is $25,000 to make sure we train our teachers to make sure the program is effective. Bosse's installment purchases, we haven't really talked about this much, but we've talked about technology. So this would, in one year, address all of our technology concerns. It would take care of six-plus-year-old devices in offices and classrooms. It would have display devices in every instructional space. It would bring us the ability to implement one-to-one, not that we're ready to do it fully, we still have work to do on that, but the ability to do that. And potentially improve large spaces on campus, such as the PAC, such as the elementary large gym, so that they can be used more effectively.
And what Jim means by that is an entertainment-grade projection screen. So we could have somebody be able to utilize it from anywhere in here, project like with a long throw camera, and it makes it a usable visible space instead of having this tiny little thing that's not hooked up to the speaker. So that way, kids can have, you know, movies in here, there can be speakers in here, it can be utilized in that way, and same for the elementary school. And when Jim's talking about the IP purchases, again, that's spread out, that's an installment purchase through Bosse's. And he also forgot copiers, by the way.
Well, copiers, I didn't think that was all that important.
If you're, if you're an educator, copiers are probably the most important thing that there is. Working ones, of course.
My wife would have, yes.
But I think this is an important item that we've been talking about for the past two years, and here's why. Two years ago, when COVID happened, we realized that we had a huge deficit when it came to our technology and infrastructure. We didn't have Wi-Fi that was capable in our buildings, and our elementary school was spotty at best. We've changed that at this point as we've moved forward. We did not have up-to-date equipment that was needed to be able to meet the needs of all of our students, that is now changing. And now our instructional model, which is again, something that was put into the plan. People said, I want our kids to have the best 21st century skills, and our teachers to be able to do those things for our kids, that's what this does. This puts us in an opportunity where now we'll have all of the technology that other schools have, and other students have these opportunities with interactive display models and things like this that will be put into place within a year. And then we then put a lot of professional development into that because you have to do both, right? You can't just give the technology without giving the tools on how to use them correctly. Rachel, you have a question?
Yeah, the interactive displays in every instructional space, is that how, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so the technology committee has been working on this for a while now, and they've looked at two different types. They've looked at a ViewSonic, I think I'm saying that right, and they looked at a Promethean boards. These are, if you've gone to other schools and you've seen them, they are basically large TV screens that can be utilized in a lot of different models, but they're also touchscreen. So just like a smartboard, but the smartboard technology has now been outdated. We don't have it. And if you look at our elementary school right now, you go into some rooms, there's smartboards. You go into other rooms, there's display models. You go into other rooms, it's a projection screen. So this would go into every instructional space. Every instructional space is K-12.
Why every?
So the teachers have the ability to use it.
Does every, like, is that something that every teacher wants, and that fits every?
Yes.
I just don't know how that, so.
So the technology committee within the district is also made up of staff members, so we're all looking at that. And these models that we're looking at will meet the needs of our teachers as per a display model and for an interactive model for our students.
And how, I know that software dies off after a period. How much does it cost to keep the software going on these so that they?
Well, the software is included for the first five years under the lease. So what the idea is with an installment purchase is, we plan to replace these in the future after the five years. So it would be a continuing cycle of replacement so that we never go out of date, I guess is the best way to put it.
So, okay, so it's like, well, not a million dollars just for the?
It's way less than, it's about $250,000.
$220,000 every year for five years.
And that's not all of the IP purchases.
Right, that's the copiers and the computer.
The whole list is more than a million, yes, but we pay for it over five years.
Like, you get it year one?
Yes.
And it depends on the models that we've also purchased. So the Promethean boards, in comparison to the ViewSonic, the ViewSonics will maybe have a different integration model, a different platform that we can be able to utilize, also at a cheaper level than the Promethean.
And also the other factor in every instructional space is it allows any teacher to go in there with their device and hook up to that and be able to use it.
Right, because it's the same system. And then you can switch classroom to classroom if you need a English teacher into a science teacher.
How do you install so much in one year? Are they installed?
Yes, they would install it. But we don't touch this.
This purchase plan includes installation by for all those display devices.
They would probably end up doing it, let's, with supply chain models and everything else that's going on, we probably wouldn't be doing this until January or February, and usually when you do things like this, it's always at night. So they would be installing these at night over a period of time. Yeah, so even though we say we'd get them in a year, there's a good chance that we wouldn't have them probably until June of 2023. But it all depends on how everything goes. But when they do integration models for schools when it comes to display models, it's always done at night.
I have a quick question about the reading program.
Yep.
What is that, is that a software package?
It's a, it's a fully integrated program for the district to be able to utilize with our students, similar to what the math program is now. So in our, in an elementary school, they have hands-on materials that they utilize. It's a curriculum, it's a set of skills, it's leveled across the board. That's the same thing that we're looking at for reading. I can't tell you specifically what it looks like because they haven't picked a program yet that they're willing to bring up and say, this is one that we want you to look at for the district. But it's, it's hands-on materials that meets the needs of our students, and it's also engages into the curriculum. So it's not an online program students would go on, it's what the teachers would utilize to be able to support their reading program in their classroom.
So what is the $80,000?
That buys the program itself.
So it's buying stuff, it's not, it's not a person?
So just like the math program. Yeah, so bridges, you know, you had to initially purchase the curriculum, you had to purchase the resources, same idea, and then on top of bridges.
Materials and stuff like that.
And then everything else is the PD on top.
But so it also means it's a one-time exposure.
Correct, yep. It's an investment into the students.
So similarly, if that's going to start, let's hypothetically, let's just say it starts this coming fall. The PD, those days, the superintendent's days, would those have professional development for it? Or when would that, maybe would it happen this spring, this June?
So we would integrate the professional development for that program. That would go into, again, we haven't done this yet, but we would use, A, first, the PD committee, which is made up of staff in this district as well. It would be part of those days, even the half-days or full-days that we have. It'd also be part of their. It would be part of those days, even the half-days or full-days that we have, it'd also be part of their planning time, faculty meetings, because that's usable time that can be done. And, you know, there's a lot of different ways that it can be done with that. You know, we haven't planned it out specifically, again, first we have to find the program and then figure out how we're gonna implement the program. Exactly, and we use a collaborative leadership style when it comes to these things. So we're involving the building leadership team, which is at the elementary school to really help develop that plan.
Similarly, the Prometheus Board, professional development would be integrated.
That's a little bit different because we would be utilizing Shawna Worley. So Shawna Worley is, you know, she's our instructional integration specialist through the district. So she actually would be helping us integrate it, so that can actually happen in time. So we would use like faculty meetings and we would be big, big pushes, but Shawna would be then doing weekly pushes. And she could go in the classrooms and also work with the teachers right during that timeframe.
Because it's something that clearly integrates into the work you would do or the way you'd set up a curriculum or a service.
Yeah, so Shawna would actually be in the classroom at times if teachers wanted her there to be able to help, that would be her position to help do that. Anything else?
Hey, staffing changes, the enrollment at the elementary we know about, so the additional kindergarten section that we believe we will need, the teaching assistant for that section. And one full-time position in the middle school to offer business and other courses.
So that is a, currently what we discussed was a point four, point six. Point four, teacher assistant to meet the needs, we already have a teacher assistant position that will be open next year, and a point six business person, that is to meet the sixth grade, since we have five sections in sixth grade. This way we can offer our business program in sixth grade, create a continuation for seventh grade, because again, we are, people wanted, and we talked about this, adding more curriculum and offerings for our students. Then in the high school, we're also pushing students away and closing out business selective courses. So this is an opportunity then to open up more courses for our students and bring back CEIP, which is Career Exploration and Internship Program. We had that a couple of years back, the person then went to the middle school and so that position, basically, we kind of lost it. So bringing back a point six person would be able to help offer that program. So we're meeting the needs of the enrollment and also meeting the curricular needs of our students.
When will we know the size of the curriculum?
Um, so.
Not till the first day of school.
Kind of, that's how it works, you know, right now, we're tracking it. You know, we have an estimated number right now, which is tracking lower than what our expectation was, it's about seventy-five. But we had two different types of enrollment projections, so we're finding this one hard to believe that we haven't got all our numbers yet. So we're still waiting on that, but if that, you know, but again, I think it's important to note that, you know, our class sizes changes, change, and, you know.
Seventy-five is not far from where we are.
It really, it isn't, no, but, you know, we could have an influx in our first grade, so that one person that we had going in for kindergarten, we could say, you know what, hold on a second, we can use you here. So I do see that need still being very needed, in lack of better words.
Better to have it, not to have it.
Thank you, Jim, I couldn't think of the word that I was looking for. But we're still anticipating a larger kindergarten section.
When's the usual, like, registration deadline?
Now, yeah, they start, usually we get now, but we still end up getting some over the next month and then through the summer, yep.
It's March, it's definitely March.
And they're gonna have, I think, this March, this Thursday.
Thursday's our first meeting.
Yeah, but we still see an influx throughout, you know, the rest of the year.
As for our new classes, is it worth it as a board or to discuss the idea of language options besides just Spanish?
Well, I think that should be, have you discussed that in curriculum?
It's been, it's something that, no, we haven't, but it's something that was very much on the survey. There were a lot of requests for foreign language options.
So we are looking at that and the curriculum committee can look into it. And we're talking about being able to offer distance learning courses that be able to be leveled up through it. And I think the important thing is, you know, making sure that whatever the district does offer, that you're able to sustain that program without having four kids in a classroom or six kids in a classroom. You know, you want to be able to make sure that you're offering it all the way through instead of, you know, eight or nine students at a time. And we're also looking at not just foreign language, but there's also technology courses that people wanted in different curricular activities. So it's something that can be looked at, I think for this year, you know, the budget's kind of failed on that one, but, you know, definitely for the future it can be looked into.
It's just something that was, in the survey, had a lot of requests for more foreign language.
So perhaps we could start it with the curriculum committee, Tim? Item for discussion, bring back to the board.
They're on the agenda for the next meeting.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
Anything else?
Got six left.
Vehicle proposition for our May seventeen vote. So usually we go out for two or three buses every year. This year, we're requesting two large buses and one smaller bus. We're also requesting a larger heavy-duty work truck with a plow so that we can handle more of our snow maintenance here rather than depending on other municipalities and, you know, what their time schedule is rather than just having our people do it. Based on recent mini-dids through the Office of General Services, it's about seventy thousand dollars for a fully kitted-out truck, heavy-duty with plow and, Salter, I believe, but I feel I would be able to tell us that. The total proposition is going to be just under four-hundred thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. The buses are aided for five years at transportation aid ratio. And what we do is we go out for borrowing over five years to line up the expense with the revenue. Any questions on any of that?
Do you know how much we pay out now for people to remove the snow?
I do not have that, but I can certainly get that.
I'm sure it's pricey.
Do we pay now, or is it, you mentioned municipalities.
Other than the municipalities help us, but I know if there was a significant situation, we may have to get a loader out here and.
But we pay our own people to do our snow removal.
And I think what you asked Cindy about, do we pay external people to save us?
It would depend on the volume of snow.
Yeah, and who knows?
No, it is not.
That was my other question.
That's why I very specifically said buses aided, because truck is not, unfortunately. Tax cap, the information we actually filed, the bottom-line number came out to four-point-one-six percent after all of the nationations here. The budget draft includes the tax levy increase of two-point-five, which is one-point-six-six percent lower than the actual tax cap. And because of our property value growth, we believe the tax rate will increase less than one percent, which basically means if your value doesn't change, which it will, equalization rates and all that, I won't talk about that, your taxes will go up less than one percent in that case. Summary of the proposed budget, twenty-eight, one-four-six, six-one-one on the expense side and the revenue side. Revenue is below tax cap increase allowed. And the increased state aid allowed us to do that with an allocated fund balance of two-and-a-half percent, as we talked about before, which is a reasonable number for an allocated fund balance. Projected gap, again, zero. Any questions on that one?
Do you have the detail on where the fund happens?
I have done an estimate, and I will certainly provide that at the next meeting as far as what the year-end results will be and where everything's coming from and going to.
Yeah, could you add one more minute?
Yep. That'd be a very good discussion for that committee, yes.
Any other questions on budget?
Thank you.
Oh, you know, I can actually see the layers this time. I'll just stay here for the next presentation to.
Give both of them, if you wouldn't mind, next is the transportation.
Thanks, so, thank you very much, frankly, for keeping us updated on that budget, very much appreciated. Okay, so next we'll move on to superintendent's report. You have a couple of different things to speak to us.
Oh, yeah. Lots of things, all right, so let's get started. The first thing I want to talk about is re-envisioning the elementary school and talking about the work that the facilities committee is doing. So I would like to bring up John Jojo and Michelle Lespritz from Mosaic, and Jim will set that up. So let me talk about this really quick. And I think I want to kind of just set the idea of conversation about what's gonna take place. Yep, so over the past, gosh, I'm gonna say since I got here, and we've been looking at our facilities and looking at what we've been doing, and we've been doing our enrollment study, and, which has been pretty clear, is we're seeing our enrollment grow. And we're continually moving forward on what our enrollment is and what our needs are going to be at the elementary school. And as we've already discussed, we're gonna need four to five new classrooms at least to be able to meet the needs of our students and set the district up for the future. One of the problems that we keep seeing with this is that our transportation facility is, you know, wedged in at the elementary school into that facility. Now, I know you've discussed this throughout the years and, you know, some of the problems that go along with it, the buses congest that area, and it's also then you have the buses on the same property as the elementary school. This plan, this idea, is all dependent on moving the transportation facility. You can't really do anything at the elementary school unless that transportation facility is moved. You know, you can't really build up on the elementary school, you're still gonna have the same transportation, the facility there having those issues, and that facility is starting to get outdated as well. So, you know, the idea is we have to move one in order for the other to happen. The problem is, is that where do you move it to? Right, over the years, you've had a couple of conversations, you've looked at land, site work is expensive, nowhere, what you do it, site work is not aidable, okay, let's always remember that. But you'd have to purchase land already, and if you purchase land, it's on a hill or anything else, your site work even goes up more. So the best option is to use land that you currently have. So you have land, you have two locations that you could actually put a transportation facility. The one is that you looked at once before, which is really prime real estate, and that's over at the Socrates. It's flat, it's there, you know, you could put a transportation facility there, but yet you're hindering then the opportunities that you have later on for anything that you'd want to do in that area. The other option, which is a little bit different, is actually putting it behind the building. And the architects are much better at this, we've done some work on it. So this is kind of the steps forward, the facility committee's been working on this for a good year, I'll say, at this point. And now we want to bring it to the board to say, you know, is this something the board would like us to continue to move forward and then look at, you know, putting something together for a possible referendum? So please ask your questions, kind of go through it. John and Michelle are gonna really kind of walk us through it, but I definitely will be more than happy to pipe in because they know that. They know I will cut in whenever I feel like it, and then we'll just go from there. Any questions before we begin?
Disappointed that the DPW option?
No, no, I know that we were trying to work with the DPW for, you know, options, and I think it's important, as I stated before, we look at every avenue to see what we can do and how we can partner, and it just wasn't something feasible that we were gonna be able to partner with the DPW on this. So this was the other plan, this was the Plan B, or actually it was Plan A to start with, that I've been working on from the beginning with the facilities committee, and, you know, I think we're very happy with this outcome, and it does meet the needs of the district. So, you know, and it does help us move forward. Even before we begin, though, I do want to state that we did do our due diligence already looking at some certain things at the elementary school. One is our floodplain, that's been addressed, and I know John can address that as well. And also we did some core sampling at the elementary school to make sure that there was no chemical seepage within the ground, and there wasn't. So everything that we've done there is already made it pretty sound for that to be able to change over into instructional spaces. And this is just the next step in that process. Any other questions? We would have been done, yeah. Yeah, no, so we were happy about that, but I'm gonna leave it over to Mosaic.
Great, thank you. So just to kind of follow up, I have one question.
John, can you?
A little more noise here.
So we did look at the DPW very closely to make sure that it would work, because obviously what we're trying to do is what's most advantageous for the district as far as looking at some financial concerns. So what you're going to be seeing tonight is kind of like a snippet of kind of where we are with our design. Nothing is really set in stone, it's more of a conceptual nature, we're still doing cost estimating, we're still working on getting survey work done, we're still working on some geotech. Because obviously when you start seeing the way we have our design, you'll have other questions. But folks know, Michelle Lespritz, our project architect, with tonight, I also brought Tim Bonaparte from the Pill Osborne. He's our landscape architect consultant, and he's also going to be able to address any of the site question a little bit more. Tim, you wanna come up and I'll, I'm gonna slide over a little bit.
And the one other thing I'm gonna state about this project is, tonight we're only talking about the project, right? About what the construction would look like at the elementary school. We're not talking about anything else at the elementary school. And here's what I mean by that, we're not talking about putting air conditioning on the third floor of the elementary school. We're not talking about putting a new PA system in the elementary school. All the other things that you could do when you're doing a building project, this isn't what we're talking about. We're just talking right now about what does the, like, the gutting construction look like, the remodeling aspect of it. As you do a project, you can add all these other layers, and again, every time you add a layer, you add cost to this project. But there are things that we, you know, we could address when we're going through the elementary school. That's not what this conversation's really for tonight, but there, I do have a very hefty list that I gave John where he goes, okay, that's not what we're talking about at this moment. We're only talking about the remodeling and kind of re-envisioning what our elementary school and campus can look like.
So, here you go, what the, and one of the things that you're going to see is, over next to the bus garage, out in the front area, what we're really looking at to do is trying to consolidate all of the administrative areas, so you have like a central area to come into the building. We're looking to take the kitchen cafeteria to slide it over into the existing bus garage and to create like a little more outdoor space and get the kind of sea of asphalt that's in that area and get it back into a little bit more into a green space, okay? So you're gonna take care of this, Tim, on flipping our slides. And I'm gonna turn it over to these two, and again, stop us if you've got any questions, and I'm sure all three of us can be able to answer your question.
Yeah, next one.
So, it's a little fuzzy, but, so what we would do is we would take over the existing bus garage right now, and that would become the kitchen cafeteria, loading area, and the lighter yellow color would be gang bathrooms, and also your existing mechanical space would stay over there. We would move, well, we would actually create a front entrance, because we really don't have a main front entrance right now. That would be the light yellow, that's between the gray and the darker yellow. So the gray area would be your administrative offices, your principal, your vice principal, your reception area, you would have a secure vestibule where you would come in, and then you would either be allowed at the school or you would go into the office. The two rooms next to the entrance are where your cafeteria is now, they would become classrooms. And then where your transportation office is now would become your health suite. What we tried to do is move all the administrative areas down to the first floor near a main entry. There would be a small addition that would connect the two, because right now there's no way to connect the two hallways in the back. So that is the plan for the first floor.
So let me, let me talk about this really quick. So where you see that large space for the cafeteria, that actually would also be a community space. So that has doors on it that can actually be locked off going to the rest of the building, and that can be opened up and split in half, so you have a large group instruction space and smaller group instruction space that's within that area. So you could have Boy Scouts in there, you could have like different events going on at night for our community, and they could utilize that area. So that is, you know, the cafeteria now, our elementary school's kind of tight, and you have to go through the building, this actually is a secure area that creates a nice, sound community space to be able to be utilized. Also, the rest of this that we have that's not highlighted, again, there could be movements of classrooms. So we could be able to move a music room into a traditional space and create a centralized music classroom in another location. There's a lot that we can do, but these are just the spaces there. The one thing that we don't have at the elementary school, and I know this is important, but I just want to state it, that, you know, for safety and security purposes, the way that the elementary school is currently set up is not optimal. You know, you have to buzz in, and you can either go downstairs and/or upstairs, and then you have to take a right. and then you have to take a right to walk into the elementary, into the school office. There's a lot that can happen in that timeframe. So this is an opportunity where now you can create a very safe, secure entranceway where everything is centralized and it's, it's right there, taking away and mitigating the possible issues of any safety concerns that could come from it.
It's a lot more visual, visual.
Yeah.
Will be when you.
Correct.
I, I have a question. I know that these are not written in anything other than paper. The entrance to the, um, cafeteria, is it that corridor behind the?
No, there, where your overhead doors are now, you would actually create some doors.
For students to come for lunch.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So the line, that says a single door or a double door, it looks like a single door. So I'm just picturing, because like usually the line.
The line's actually on the other side.
Would be over, right, the line would be over here because this would, but, but kids are gonna be coming in and going out and, and.
Well, that's, that's what we're looking at more of a staging area when you access into that space. And then, uh, obviously when lunch period's over, people will be exiting out.
The size of the hallway would be up to code then. So it would be able to meet the needs of be able to two lines safely. So it'd be a larger hallway.
Yeah, okay, I, I'm just looking at it and picturing.
One of the things that you will not note, notice right off is the entire area of the cafeteria and the kitchen, we're actually raising the floor up to meet the level of the main floor.
Because it floods.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, not just every hundred years.
This is a, this is a partial floor plan. So current entrance is off this?
Yeah, yeah, it's off.
How far, how far over, what's, how far are we missing here?
Um, just a little bit because if you look at the drawing where it says crawl space, it's the stair. That's the stair that you come in now.
Oh, that's the stairway, okay.
Because that's the locker rooms that are down below there.
Okay.
Second floor, second floor. So what's only happening on the second floor is we would take over the area that is administrative right now and your health suite and turn them into two classrooms. So this is a schematic idea of what the front of the new cafeteria, kitchen, main entrance would look like. Um, the green obviously is grass and the gray would be some sidewalks. And the darker gray would be some boulders and outdoor seating area. Our plan was to use the grade to be the ramp. So, because right now, if we raise the floor, you'll need the ramp and/or stairs. So our plan is to use grade and gradually slope the grade so that we don't need a traditional ramp so that everything out there will be handicapped accessible and, you know, just kid-friendly.
We still need to maintain parking up front.
Yes, we re-stripe the parking.
So we need to keep that.
So we need to keep, so this is again, an opportunity for us to re-envision where the elementary school is. So if this is something we were gonna look into more, we would then look at the traffic pattern and how we would utilize that space, the space behind the building and the space on the other side of the bridges. Because there's a lot that we can look at.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, would we change the traffic flow, would we put a median in where it's a circle? You know, there's a lot of different things that can be done. And that's where you have an architect come in and really look at different traffic, traffic flows and traffic patterns.
What I talked about though, Tim, is with, with the buses gone, it frees up the parking.
Yeah. Yeah, there's another 20 spots.
I, I don't get up there very often, so.
Right.
Uh, did you use that back entrance or was run entrance when they're going back?
They use the front entrance, so they use the front entrance as the parents are coming into the building. The front part facing the, the river.
Yeah.
That's utilized for generic, basic entrance and exit of the building.
Okay.
If they're going to out the play.
Yeah.
And using that backfield, they use the back area the majority of the time.
I'm only wondering, would there be any trust to use that entrance in the back?
So that's, you have to have right away, so you have to have right away for, um, the electric company, so you can't pave over that. Yeah, that is one of the conversations that we had as well, because it would be nice, you know, that's a nicer area. But yeah, you have to, you have to have that open for the electric.
Well, when, when the new main entry, it'll be nice.
Yeah, so the, and the idea of the main entrance, I think it's important because Michelle's not really, it doesn't show it. We'd have to do something that meets the criteria of the building. You would have to go through SHPO and, oh, you have, oh, is it, okay. So you have to have, but that doesn't, because we have it.
This is just a.
We'd have it be architecturally dynamic as, because a grand opening, you know, into the building.
We, I mean, we could do something, you know.
But there's a lot of options.
First shot at this thing, so we would, you know, yes, like Frank was saying, we do have to go through SHPO and the State Historic Preservation Society to get approval on anything that we do out here. So, I'm sorry.
There's all the copper metalwork over the door that's current and it's just the main door.
Yeah.
It's old building.
Yeah.
Well, glad to see the green space you created here. More of that we could have out in the future, but would you agree with me now?
Absolutely, yeah, I think. Who doesn't love to pave up against the building area? Except for the maintenance guys.
Before we move on to the transportation aspect, I also want to point out that, you know, if funds allow, we will do more in the front. Um, I'd also like to redo the bathrooms in the elementary school. There's definitely some need of those. So there's a lot at that elementary school I'd love to do. Again, this is, you know, the vision of it. But in order for us to do this vision, we then have to have the foresight to move transportation.
Can I ask, so this gives us four additional classrooms?
It actually gives us more than that because the conference room on the second floor can be moved to the, um, to the admin area, so add that room as well.
Okay.
And then we could also restructure some of those classrooms and open them up a little bit and create another instructional space. So it does give us more space.
So we need six rooms. If that enough to account for the enrollment projections.
And maintain science classroom.
Yes, because then we're looking at five more sections added into the building atop of the computer lab that we currently have it now. Since we're moving into a classroom-based technology instruction, we have that room, so that would meet our needs. You know, it's not going crazy, it's meeting the needs for the district. Because our enrollment study for the next five years doesn't show us needing 10 new classrooms, it really shows us needing six.
But do we get to the point where we're doing the math on moving the, like, your office somewhere else with now high school or middle school? The, the reason I had is the space above the cafeteria and all the darker, like, is one left, right?
So we're not, no, we wouldn't have to be able to put two stories in there, couldn't do two stories. Not without taking a roof off.
Only one story now.
Yeah, I think it was 16 or 18 feet to the other side of the structure right now.
We're also bringing the floral.
Yeah, yeah.
But are we gonna be back?
We, you know, based on our enrollment study and what we've seen and the trends over the, you know, what we're seeing for five to 10 years and the projections, we're not, you know, we don't see it going to that level where we're going to need that more room. Um, at this time, I think it would be excess to put that much in. And then it's smarter to be able to really focus in on the, you know, conservative need of those buildings and then do the, the deferred maintenance that's in that building as well. Yeah. No, that's a good question. We did look at that though. The Facilities Committee, did I miss anything on the elementary school?
I see you, you include kids club in here.
Because that's what it currently is.
Right. But again, they have their own separate entrance, so they don't go through school. Would they, are you anticipating they'd come in?
Yeah, the secure vestibule.
They are at 7:00 AM, you know, before the first ones here sometime and the last ones out. So this would be their entrance to?
It could be, or, you know, with the conversations, because again, this is the very beginnings of this, we could look at restructuring the classrooms in the elementary school, um, completely. So really, things could change, I'm not gonna guarantee it. But right now, yes, that secure area would be straight shot up.
Early and end of day.
And what classrooms are required to have bathrooms, Jessica?
John?
Uh, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, and the second, and the second floor where the offices are, those do have already bathrooms built into them. So we are already having that ability, um, to be able to do that there. Anything else on elementary before we go to the?
I just want to appreciate that before we talked about it, and we're not talking about it, but that you mentioned the HVAC and that the school building could definitely use some help with that because as we move forward, ventilation is so crucial.
As we've seen. We've itemized that on the building condition survey and we're, we're compiling data for the superintendent right now.
Awesome. Bigger than that.
So when, uh, I would hope that we would get an opportunity when we get some good weather and go out there and do another walk around on that.
Absolutely.
I mean, that, that to me is the important piece at this point.
All right.
Well.
Okay.
So.
Time to.
This is where we propose putting the new bus garage now.
So.
Right now.
So let me take this one real, so. We, I was having a conversation with somebody, we kind of had an epiphany and I called John and, and I said, I think we can fit a bus garage in the back. And John said no at first, just to be honest. And we looked at that and honestly, you can. If you look here, you can see on the far right-hand side is where the building currently is. Now, there's parking back there that we can change and redo and figure that out. So that, you know, this is again, blank slate area. You have the baseball field, which if it needs any work such as drainage or anything like that, you could do it. If there were lights or anything that needed to be added at that time, there's things, you know, you're already doing site work. So again, those are all the bells and whistles you can add. But getting to the nitty-gritty aspect of it, this area here, you could push into the wall. The fuel island would probably go because we'd be moving into electric. Um, but this is one design that John has looked at. We had about four that we've looked at, but this is the one that John feels is probably gonna be most successful for that back area, so.
One of the things I'll mention that you probably don't see right on hand here is that there's like a little thick black line that goes around this entire site. That's what I, obviously we're going to have to dig into the embankment on the, on Martin Road. And that's one of the reasons why I initially said that I did, I, I wanted to consider a different site. Because in this particular, uh, design, site work is very, very expensive. So that's one of the reasons why we are currently working on developing a survey and doing some geotech. Uh, because as you know, you've got a pretty large, like, mountain behind the entire district. And I'm just concerned on what we might, uh, uh, dig into if we don't have borings ahead of time. But because you've got, you know, there's something that holds back our mountains, right? So what I don't want to do, run into is very large boulders that we have to address. So having that information today might make me feel much better and provide the district with a better price for the site work. So stay tuned on that.
What does the soil survey say?
Uh, well, we're still, we're, the geotech has not, has been ordered, they just haven't been able to come yet.
Right, but there's, um, not just the geotech, but the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service has a soil survey for the area. So that would have some information as to soil type and, and that would also include information about probable underlying.
True, Tim, you want to?
Do you have that?
Yeah.
You not, I would say that, yes.
But, I mean, ultimately, we still want, initially, it didn't say anything about like any sort of rock refusal of bedrock or something like that, but just initially going out on the site and looking at that, that's what we're kind of concerned with. Especially because of the retaining wall we have to put out there, that's that, that thick line that John was talking about, because we have to be at the level of the road where your buses come in. Then obviously cutting that slope or level land in, so now you have 20 foot maybe plus or minus retaining wall on the backside. You gotta keep your baseball field where it is, so. The green space that we saved at the elementary school, we're, we're adding some pavement here.
Is there a, is there a big incline right here?
Existing, existing, yes. So if you, if you look, I mean, you can, I don't know if you can see it on your survey, the contours are there. You've got these, there are multiple contours. So, um, possible.
Yeah.
But obviously the cost goes up considerably if we have a few.
Rock. But I would be optimistic and say we'd be fine. But you have to do the survey first to figure it out, right, so.
Are there any traffic issues?
No, that's.
It's actually a very minimally traveled road. So, uh, it's hard working for, so working from that and from the bus garage to access that short distance, it's actually worked very, very well. You know, again, the biggest concern here is digging into the wall. If not, you've got plenty of room that works really well. You know, there's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be tough to go chase after a fall ball. But, uh, you know, we are, we are projecting a, a nice screen along that, uh, along the embankment to catch them. But I'm sure that there's gonna be some, uh, some folks who are gonna be able to knock it over the top of that, uh, you know, 30 or 40 foot fence line.
So John did share, um, a couple other pictures of sites that you've worked on. Transportation facility, I believe, was one of them. That has a wall very similar to the wall that we're looking at doing.
Where?
Where was that, John?
Liberty was on and, or, I forget. So there was figures, we can send those to you.
You should still have that.
Okay, just, yeah. So the other question that came up regarding the retaining wall is?
Especially unused space for your district actually.
One, how long does a retaining wall like that, what's the integrity of that, how long will it last?
It's a lifetime, you know, as far as we know it yet. 75.
That was just a question that I know.
Yeah, lifetime, 75.
I think you had that trish the other day, so I, I've been holding it.
Yeah, you don't want to build it in half if we build it five hundred.
So do you want to go over the facility?
Sure, that would be the next slide, please.
Well, let's talk about just in general here, what we're looking at. Not the facility, but I want to talk just about the parking aspect.
Okay, I'll, yeah.
So if you want to talk about the parking, how we would, we would do an infrastructure in for electric buses as well? Because as you know, we're gonna be moving forward.
This was a quick sketch, we were talking about having a fuel island. So obviously the traffic flow around going in and out of the bus garage itself, now whether there's a bus wash is a whole other conversation as well. The buses would come in more towards the westerly side of the site. They would come in and they would fuel up and or vice versa and then go park. So you would have one area, you'd have bus drivers and then buses coming in and out of site and then the other one going out. Um, but ultimately, if you're gonna be doing electric buses, then you can clearly do away with that and then figure out another circulation pattern. But the footprint is generally, generally the same, we've kind of maximized the space and made sure that you have room for snow removal, um, on, on all sides. Um, and then also adequate parking for all of your district buses and then if we're getting your adding buses as well. So.
Any questions on that before we go into the facility stuff?
So that's parking for the buses and the drivers.
Correct, yeah, if you look in the bottom of your little parking summary, that, uh, full-size buses, half buses and then our maintenance. If those numbers are not accurate, we can adjust those numbers as you.
They're both, yeah, they're very touchy.
Okay.
That dark line over on the left-hand side, vertical.
Yep.
You got a property line?
Correct. So where's the next one?
Yeah.
Um, obviously the biggest concern is, you know, you're spending all this money on these buses, that fall balls aren't flying over hitting the buses. John had kind of mentioned, so we had to make sure that there's netting up that would stop. 95% of the fall balls, but there still could be a possibility of a fall ball to hit over that. Ultimately, that's, it would be hard to do. Big purple wall.
And so the facility?
Yeah, you can't really see it on the screen, but, um, we have three bays for the poss, and the possible fourth wash bay. And then we have a, the transportation office that is bigger than the one that you have now in the elementary school. We have a lunch room slash training room for the drivers. Um, we have bathrooms, we have mechanical space, we have tire storage, we have parts stored. There's an office for the head mechanic, there's an oil room, electric room, compressed air room. There's an office for the head mechanic, there's an oil room, electric room, compressed air room, our server room. You know, we had an initial meeting with the head mechanic and the transportation person. And these are the changes that had come out of that meeting.
John will tell you when I talk about this that I'm not talking about a brick building. Brick is more expensive. You know, the board can make a decision after that. My suggestion would be a metal building or there's other types of buildings that we can look into that are more cost-effective and also durable. Brick buildings will cost more as we put them up. But that would definitely be a conversation that would be had. But John, do you want to talk about kind of the buildings we were talking about?
Well, we, basically because we really haven't had a conversation with, about what the quality of construction is, we took the position where we would hit someplace in the middle of the road. Now, whether or not you build a steel structure with a, like brick veneer and have internal roof drains, obviously that's something that we would prefer because the water does not shed beyond those areas. Like you could imagine, if you have a middle building, you've got a pitched roof, water's coming off on both sides. You could certainly address that with downspouts and gutters. And we can certainly take that away from the, away from the building, you know, through storm sewage. But the reality is that there's things that always get, that go beyond that. Whether it's blowing snow or, you know, maybe torrential downpour, you always have run into the opportunity for water to actually splash down at the base of the, of the building. You know, depending on exactly how we pitch the building, we could certainly drive in on the, on the east side. Doesn't have to be on, or I'm sorry, on the right side, doesn't have to be on the east side. So we can certainly do things to mitigate the possibility of water coming in. Because anytime I work on a bus garage, the first thing I think of is workman's claims. Because there's always the ability of slip and fall events because we have a lot of people that are coming in and out of that building. And they're usually, when is it usually, it's critical when there's snow going on. So if there's snow removal, you know, things start to get slippery after a while. If we're running a bus wash, it even becomes more enhanced. Because, you know, you're going to wash a bus off and they don't actually, it's kind of like when you go through a car wash. Most of the, most of the water gets pulled off, but as we drive out, there's certainly a drip effect. And when it's minus two, the ability for it to freeze up is enhanced. So those are the kind of things that we are starting to consider. You know, we have not priced in any kind of heated pavement, which is certainly an option. But what we want to be able to do is start that conversation to see, you know, how the board felt about a facility in this location or, and then then we can start having those kinds of particular meetings on exactly what it is that the district's looking for. So our budgets are, are as accurate as possible and we can deliver a, the building that you're, that you're going to be living in.
Aside from that runoff, the runoff from the slope and then to the drop-off, why would it be interesting to see like the, once you know what's.
I'm not, I'm not too concerned about this, how the site drains. Because once we have a retaining wall and the drainage that's, that we're going to install behind it.
Yeah.
You know, that, I, I, no concern on that at all because that's going to be addressed. My biggest concern is water coming off of the building.
Have we decided that the satellite field option is off the table?
I can bring it back if the board so wishes to.
I'm not looking.
No, no, I, it's.
I just want to know if, you know, this looks like we've got some expensive site, the developed site. Would it be a similar cost to go over across the street?
Yes.
Let them answer that.
Yeah. You've looked at it once before, so John.
See, it's, there's, there's different setups. Because if we're moving, if we're going to put the garage into the ball field, there's, there's, you know, a paved road that basically has to be built. And so are we, this is obviously a much more condensed design.
Right.
But your, your investment is vertical. Now, if you build over at the ball field, your investment is linear. Okay? So and there's, again, there's going to be other improvements that have to be done in order to bring those roads in. So the costs are, are very similar.
I mean. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know to what extent we're going to utilize that space. I don't know what we use it for now.
Satellite there?
Yeah.
All sorts of work.
Yeah.
And they do.
The nice thing about leaving the fields the way they are, you're not building any more land that way. And so putting a bus garage where like, where it's conceptually here, you know, it's, it fits with the site. You know, after we did, we looked at it. So to me, it's like, maybe it's, it's best that you keep that land as pristine as possible. Because you don't know where the district is moving or into the future.
The land across the.
The land across the way. So, so I think it might be, if it worked, if it didn't work here, I'd be the first person to say, no, listen, this, this, it looked good, we investigated, it doesn't work well, maybe we should look somewhere else. But I think, you know, and again, you can, you can discuss this amongst yourself to see what, which direction you want to go. You know, in my mind, it's always nice to be able to keep land, you know, I know there's fields on it, but to me, it's kind of like raw pristine land that you currently have. And if you don't really need to touch it today, then maybe it's best to hold on to it for something that might occur in the future.
What do we do, wash our horses?
Uh, we have a hose.
It rains?
It rains.
Basically, you have a bay with the hose, it's kind of like a manual car wash.
So last, so an estimated timeline. You know, this is, I think it's important to note that, you know, tonight is a conversation saying, you know, because we, as a facilities committee, have talked about this a lot. I think now the next step is going to be, as a board, we now can take a good look and I can prepare a referendum to say like, here, this is how much it's going to cost, this is how much it will be, really dig deep into this. But I just needed kind of to know where we are. But let's say we approve this and say we do a referendum and we go out. You'll see the timeframe that comes along with this. So Michelle can talk about it more, but we wanted to kind of show you the length of time that it takes from conception to final product.
Yep. So right now we're in pre-referendum phase and we were proposing a November vote. And right after that, we would get heavily into our drawings. We have three phases of drawings, we have schematic design, we have design development, and then we have construction documents. We are proposing a August 2023 submission to SED. And we are hoping for four-month review. Then we were going out to bid in December of 2023 and awarding in hopefully February of 2024. And starting construction on the bus garage piece, I think I started April of 2024. And the bus garage will be done sooner than the elementary school. And then the whole entire project, we would hope to be done by October of 2025 with closeout going into the end of 2025. So the state historic preservation, when would that begin? That would be, I would do that before the SED submission because you have to have your approval from them before you submit to SED. And what's the timeline for that? Sometimes they're a week, sometimes they're three months. They don't, they don't really have a review time like SED does when they're, when you buy their website. So pretty much.
It depends on how complicated that we're, that we're working on a building that's more than 50 years old. So if we're doing significant renovations on a building exterior-wise, maybe have more comments and want to know like what types of materials are you installing, are you replacing in time? Are you changing anything that has historical nature to it? If it's, if it's just maybe an internal mechanical project, that's one of the things Michelle said they could turn that around in a week.
But like we're going to have to match your windows, like any new windows, you're going to have to match your existing windows. They're going to want to know about the site disturbances, not in all. Like they typically come back with, I need this question answered, and then you go back to that next question and it's back and forth. And so they can either approve one. And then is it realistic to start construction on the elementary school and the bus garage at the same time? Is there work that can be done?
Actually, there is. One of the things that, because the bus garage is basically vacant land, you can start that whenever the ground is thawed, right? So the idea here is because everything currently today is taking months and months to order and get, what we're doing here is awarding a project. So contractors can get their bonds, insurances, and their shop fronts started. And we can approve them so that ordering our materials is really what's happening in the early phases of what we're seeing in the orange area. The actual construction most likely would not take place until the students are out of the summer.
So Frank, the next step, because I mean, November isn't that far away and you'd have to take, this is a lot of money to take to the public for a vote. So before that, you're going to draft something to us?
Well, we're not even close to drafting yet. So yes. So before that, what we'd have to do is we'd have to do the site work and the surveillance, make sure, see how much it would be. Yep. And then, and after that point, use some cost estimates of how much it's going to cost to do both of those facilities. And then how much we have to have in capital reserves in order for us to be able to do those and/or if there would be any addition in what we're asking, but we don't know that answer yet. So first we have to really kind of walk it down. And then, you know, we have to sit down and say, okay, let's do all these bells and whistles and give you a list and give you prices. So Jim and I have our work cut out as, as John and the facilities committee. So it's going to be a few months before we can really give you a better understanding, probably June, John?
I would think so. I, you know, obviously we're, we're building currently is more of like a, an à la carte sheet with all options that the district can consider. And we're also going to have prices on that. But the idea here is to, you know, I'm not the person who says what's a priority unless there's something that really has to be a priority by code. Other than that, it's going to become a district wishlist on exactly where, what's the sweet spot to hit. Because obviously we have to turn to the financial people about where you are with aid or maybe projects that are coming off the books. So those, so that, it's not really just here, us here in the room. It's going to be also the financial plan that we're going to basically talk to us. So when we don't run up against any maximum cost allowance problems at the same time.
And I'm just saying there needs to be ample time to educate our community, our taxpayers. So they understand what they're voting on and the importance of it. Because you will get a very good turnout, I'm sure, for those.
So, and I think it's important to note is that as Jim and I look through this, you know, now is a better time because if you look at our enrollment study, your enrollment study shows us 27, 28. So 25, getting the kids in there and having this finished meets the needs of our enrollment study. Currently with everything we're seeing, it looks good. Unfortunately, right now, the costs are outrageous. So I'm hoping if, you know, by the time this does something and this does get approved, hopefully the costs are down on, you know, construction at that point, because that's also important as well.
This would not be the right time to do a project like this.
No, not today.
Not today, correct. And again, in fairness to all taxpayers, you know, they, the education of this moving forward is very important for, to get their favorable vote.
I understand.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is the board, does the board want us to continue to look at this?
Well, thank you very much for all the information, your time. We'll look forward to hearing from you again very soon. Yes, thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Michelle.
Next.
Okay. Before I go over the mitigation plan, I just kind of want to go over where we are on just sports in general this year, because I know we've talked about it and we've went over our plans. So you, as you've seen, we kind of just gave you a breakdown. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Sorry, I'm looking at this, I have a club enrollment sheet in front of me. I'm like, this isn't what I wanted to talk about tonight. Sorry about that. So I want to give you a breakdown of where we currently are and to our fall sports, our winter sports, and our estimated spring sports. And of course, you know, we are having, we have so many offerings for our kids that there is sometimes a little give and take that we have to work on. But I think it's important to look at what we've been able to offer our students throughout this year when it comes to athletics. And this doesn't include, you know, all of our plays and all the other items that we do. And I also think it's important to look at the amount of students, both boys and girls, that are participating within these events. For our fall sports, we had 123 girls playing, 101 boys. In our winter sports, we had 71 girls, 65 boys. And in our spring sports, these are just estimates right now. But you can also see that our girls are 123 and our boys are at 110 estimated at this moment in time. You know, we are having, our softball team has 33 students currently. That's along with lacrosse, which is roughly 50. So I mean, you're seeing a large amount of our students going out for athletics. And the one sport that we are kind of nervous about right now is boys tennis. We're putting a push on that, we'd love to see more. You know, if and when our tennis gets done over, I think that might be a good incentive to see a wonderful facility like that. But I just wanted to share kind of where we are at this point in the year, what we've been able to offer our kids and the amount of students that are participating in these programs. Just thought it was important to share and if you have any questions.
I think it's great, Frank, for winter sports, I think, for this.
Oh.
So your numbers are a little.
Dang it. I should, I mean, they made it all the way to championships, so I apologize for that.
I don't have the infamy, but I looked at it before. Was girls tennis on there?
Yes, in the fall.
Yeah, it was on there.
How many, how many?
Golf is following me.
Eight tennis, eight girls were as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And I think it's very impressive that golf is, it's a lifelong sport in that both the girls now. I mean, we could rarely get two kids to play golf, two women, girls to play golf, and now it's 10, so that's great.
I think those are very sound numbers for this year and I just wanted to share.
Do you know how many kids this is? Like, I'm assuming that some kids play a spring sport and a fall sport.
I don't have duplicate, non-duplicate numbers.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you, but I see where you're going with it. I don't have these numbers. We do have a lot of students who do dual.
Yeah, but how many students overall are reaching?
Not exactly sure.
Frank, also, the percentage of our population is it tiny even? Boys, girls, or are these numbers more, less above our actual population?
No, we are 50/50.
We are 50/50.
Yeah, overall. So this is, this really falls in line with that.
Is there a way to also, this kind of is a quick snapshot, feels like equity wise to the participation. But is there a way to look at equity wise when you're spending on uniforms or transportation?
Yeah, yeah, we've done that. And we, I can share it again, but we're, we're actually, this year we spent more on girls than we did on boys with the uniforms and other aspects of it in the previous year. You know, because again, sometimes it's going to flip-flop a little bit. But I can pull that out again for you, but we're trying to be as equitable as possible.
I'm just more curious of how is that managed?
Okay.
Does someone make that every year?
Is there internal?
Joe, Joe, myself and Jim have been looking at it. We can bring that up at facilities committee, not this next one though. But probably the one after that. Because next one's two weeks, I'm not going to be prepared for that. But we can do that in the next time. Yeah, I will tell you that when we looked at it in the previous past and we went over it, we did spend more on girls last year than we did on boys on the new uniforms that we pushed and put out. And, you know, we do now have a plan that goes along with that, that basically is pretty equitable. But we can revisit it and I can share the numbers with you.
Hey, thank you, Frank.
Okay, now the mitigation plan that I'm going to propose for the district. So I think it's important first off, and I want to thank the board through this. I think it's important to notice that we had two years of uncertainty, two years of, you know, change that was going on. And now we're moving forward to a next and a phase in where the plan is and where the COVID pandemic has changed and moved forward with. I think the most important thing to note, and I think the most important thing this district can be very proud of, is our goal was to return to school and have a full return. And we've done that and we have done that successfully. Our attendance has been up, our students are back. And, you know, we've been able to offer, as you can tell, athletics and sports and music and art. We've been able to offer our programs to the fullest of our ability, not being hindered by the COVID pandemic. So thank you, board, for your support in having us do this and moving us forward. I think it's a really important thing to note. I think it's a really important point to note. As we move forward and change, I think it's also important to note that we follow New York State Department of Health, we follow the CDC, there are laws that we have to follow to move forward and to do that, and this plan will outline and follow those to the T, basically, is what I'm suggesting is we follow New York State Department of Health, CDC, NISID, and local Department of Health guidance. So those are the things that I'm saying that we should be looking at and doing, and this is what this plan effectively does, it also gives flexibility and the ability to have any changes that happen. I think it's also important to note for the mask mandate, as it was recently stated, the people who can initiate a mask mandate in schools are New York State Department of Health and the local health departments. School Board cannot initiate a school mandate on masks. So, right now, that's what it is, local health departments, they always could, by the way, local health departments can always make mandates on the schools, be able to take care of the health and safety and welfare of the students within their areas and towns, but the school does not have those abilities. So I know that was kind of unclear, I know NISBO sent out something that stated that, also NISID also sent out something that clarified that, answered Dr. Whalen in our most recent conversation with her. So as we go forward with it, I kind of just want to walk you through those, and each one of these things, I do have a couple of questions and clarifications of where the board will want to make sure we lie, but again, this is my recommendations of where a new mitigation plan should be. So, any questions before I just get right into this? We tend to go into, all right, so you see the first front of this, and all the things that are on here go directly to the FAQ from NISID or CDC, right? So as you can see, we switched out the new guidance, sort of second page, Jim, if you want going down, all right. Low, medium, and high would be based off of CDC, those are hyperlinks that automatically bring you to CDC guidance, so they're there for more supports, and those are the things that are there. I didn't put in here, but I will state that we will continue to watch all of our data, and I think it's important to note that, you know, the data that we're watching is the county data of our seven days that come up and working with our county, and we're also looking at the numbers that we have for students that are positive within the district, right? So I mean, if you had zero to .49%, that's low, right? If you have 1% of your student population, that's roughly 45 to 50 kids a week with COVID positive, that's higher.
So where, where are you getting that framework for the percentage?
It's just one that I made up, to be very.
So, because again, if you have 1% of the population, for anywhere testing positive a week, that's an enormous.
Right, and that's why we can be considered high.
Yeah.
Yeah, 1% is high, in those regards. So that's what you said, that's a lot, that's, that would be, but if you're looking at seven kids or five kids from 1,200 kids in a district, and that includes staff, that's a small amount of students. So we are watching that just to see if we have large spikes in our student population. If there were large spikes in our student population, I'd automatically contact the local health department and get their recommendations. They are the officials on this, they are the ones that understand how this works, I'm not a medical professional, I'm not an epidemiologist, I don't think any of us here on the board are, so local health department is always going to be, the one positive thing, there's many positive things I think that came out of COVID, our relationship with the health department has never been as strong, we have bi-weekly meetings with Dr. Whalen, a superintendent in Albany County, you know, this is an ability for us to have open, honest conversations, so we haven't had that before, so I think that's important. Any questions before I get into the plan itself? Okay, so moving on. All right, so COVID vaccines, strongly encouraged for all, of both staff and students, the district will organize vaccination clinics as needed. You'll see a little asterisk that you'll see from time to time, on the bottom, it states recommendations regarding vaccination are made under the belief that all individuals, staff, and students will consult with their healthcare provider regarding the appropriateness of the COVID vaccine. So again, this is all choice, this is just a recommendation based off of New York State Health Department and the guides that we receive from our medical professionals. Going on, testing in potential positive cases and surveillance and diagnostic testing. So, I know you can read, but I'm going to just kind of do this, the asterisk on it is, New York State requires all staff to present full proof of vaccination or to participate in weekly testing, that is still ongoing, it's still mandated, and we do offer that, we still have our lab PCR, and we have all of our litany of COVID tests that we have available.
Is there any chatter about whether the.
There is chatter, that, I think it goes to April, don't quote me on the dates, actually, so I don't know the specifics of the litigation, but it's still going on, and I, that's up to them and if they change it or not.
Changing what way?
To just eliminate the requirement for vaccination. It wouldn't surprise me if that's to change.
So again, we are going to encourage testing as much as possible, you know, parent consent is still required to be tested by nurses, we will not do that. At home and over the counter rapid tests are available, students and staff, and our laboratory pool testing is available, tests available to be students and staff utilized as surveillance testing, we have a lot of staff that are interested in doing that, we sent out a recent survey, 66 staff members stated that they would be interested in using weekly COVID tests for surveillance, that's a lot more than we currently have, and then we had about another 32 staff members that were definitely thinking about it, so that was a big push in comparison to what we've had in the past. If an individual test, oh, go ahead.
You said that's for the at-home test or for the.
It's either, I just said weekly testing.
PCR?
Yeah, and they, they could choose either one that they wanted, but I asked if they were interested in utilizing it, would it be weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly, and we had a lot of people respond back.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah, so if an individual tests positives, notification should be made by, to the school nurse and principal, and must be reported to Albany County Department of Health. You know, they are in charge of this, that is their responsibility, so that has to be done, and again, if you, you know, if someone's sick, we'll talk about that later. One thing that came up, and I also put it down as a document for the board, I went and did random sampling of our students on Monday and Tuesday, and I went almost to all the high school study halls and spoke to the students, and, you know, I wanted to get their input on how they felt, and sometimes, having a face-to-face conversation with kids is the best way to go, because A, they feel valued, and B, they're going to give you really honest feedback. And, you know, some of the feedback that I received was, they didn't realize that they had the ability to test, and I, when I asked the students, what would you want, what would you think we need, they said, well, we need more testing, and I said, you know I have tons of tests, right? And they're like, explain it to me, so I explained it to them, and this happened more and more throughout the day, and I said, well, your parents have to have permission, and the high school student said to me, why? Well, right now, this is the medical advice, I have to have parent permission, so what I have in here, in the board document, is actually a draft that you can have, and it's a, it's an opt-out for parents to be sent home, and the parent can choose to say, no, I don't want my child to pick up a test, but if they don't send it back in, a child, if they want to pick up a test, may pick up a test and bring it home for use. You know, I had ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders and eighth graders say, if I want a test, can I just pick one up from the nurse? So, this is something that I want to bring to the board, right now, we're using the practice where we do not do that, and it has to be parent pickup. High schoolers did ask for this, so, you know, I listened, I thought it was a good idea. I work with our attorney, so that is, you know, a very well-written legal document that you have in front of you, and the one question that I have is, with the age bracket that is there? Currently, I have grades six through 12, may choose to pick up a home kit if they so wish to, you know, developmentally, many sixth graders, I think, could handle it, you know, definitely, our ninth and 12th graders absolutely can, again, this is also parent choice, so if a parent says, no, I don't want my sixth grader doing that, the opt-out form comes in, and it's done, thoughts on that.
Did the middle school principal?
Yep, they, they were fine, and they, what I'm, what the recommendation I'm giving to you is based off of conversations that I've had with them, they felt that developmentally, some sixth graders can handle it, some sixth graders can't, that's why I put grade six through 12, I could put through seven through 12, I just want to know where the goal is.
I said my fifth grader would be developmentally able to it more than some of the older children.
And it's like, they, they are initiating, going and getting it, so I don't, I can't imagine someone that wasn't educated to do it, who'd just go ask for a test, it's nothing dangerous for them.
And the parent guardian option of opting out, say, I'm not comfortable with my child.
But the parent has given prior permission for.
No, this is, this is, no, this is.
Opposite.
This is opposite, so the only, if you don't send it in, you've automatically given consent.
But the kid has to go ask for a parent on their own.
The same thing we do with surveys or other options, if you don't want your child to take something, you send in the survey saying, no, I do not want them to do something.
My question was, take it of lower, six grader, for example, parent, by not saying anything, gives that child permission to pick up a test?
Correct.
Not sure I'm comfortable with that.
So.
I would, I'd be more comfortable with the parent saying, give them permission for my student, my child, to pick up the test. I don't need that for the ninth graders on up, but what middle schoolers on the low level?
I mean, what's our attorney say?
Oh, we have district, those districts that actually do this K-12, where they just send them home in backpacks, and that's where this comes from.
It's not a problem.
No, this is not a problem, there's nothing that's in it that is, you know, that is going to cause harm.
So by, so by giving the opt-out, it's just like a nice way to say, hey, we hear people's concerns, if there are any, and you have the ability to, I mean, I'm fine with.
Right, and I have spoken to some families, and I know they said, it'd be a lot easier if my child could come get it, instead of me having to come and get them, and then right now, I have 1,200 tests.
It would be real nice not to have to think about it.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be, if it was kind of on autopilot, and just showed up, I mean, you know, what?
Or they could.
Second, fourth grader, and hasn't come home.
So my recommendation is grade six through 12. We can revisit the age bracket of it, anytime a parent in the elementary school wants their child to bring one home, they can contact the office, and they can say, I get permission, the child can put it in their backpack, we already do that, but this is more because these, the students in middle school and high school, we're teaching them independence, they want to be independent, this is a responsibility that they're, they're asking for, so that's why I wanted to listen to the students and give them an avenue.
Well, that, and it, they, it's, they go initiated, it's not like they're just getting one, they have to go to the nurse and say, I would like a.
Middle schoolers are asking for this?
Yes.
A handful, right?
Yeah, handful, not like all of them, but the kids that I talked to said, no, I love it, and every time they ask for no test, I say, you know we have them, and kids, you know, I have four, they are like, really, you have tests?
Where? So are you agree with the district's opting? My concern is to trust a sixth grader to either know how to use the test appropriately or report.
Right, well, it has to go to the parent.
Right, so is, is, that was my question, is there notice to the parent, give the child?
So, we don't have that at the moment, so the, what we're going to send out is, your child is going to pick up a test, they have the ability to pick up tests, and the parents have to have the responsibility to have those conversations with their children, saying, you know, you have the opportunity to pick up a test, would you want to do this? Is this something you'd like?
My concern is a kid who doesn't feel about it, it's a test, and then test themselves and it's positive.
So then it's, we're going back to.
It's a, it's a whole scenario.
No, no, so then it's going back to, then the parent calls and says, send home a test for my child, it's the opposite.
I think we could redo it such that, and if this is contrary to the conversations you have with the older kids who wanted disability.
That is contrary, but the middle school kids, I think, I see where you're going with.
Or you'd at least want the parent to know.
Yeah.
I guess that's what I'm getting at, Frank, is there some communication, I don't, I'm having a little, I'm trying to understand, parent has not, has not given permission for this kid to go pick it up, or has opted out, explain that again, please.
Has an option. The kid just go in and.
The kid has ability, by the parent not sending it in, saying, my child's on a list, or not having, just like we do for non-pictures, like, don't take a picture of my child, if they're not on the list, we can use the picture of a child, so same idea, they're not on the list, they can go in and we can get a test. For the sixth, or seventh, or eighth grade, we could say, okay, you have a test, the nurse could then send home, or the secretary could send home a letter for sixth grade, saying, an email, hey, by the way, Bobby picked up a test.
That's what I'm getting at, so, otherwise, the parent has not been involved in this communication, and so the student picks up this test, they supposedly take it home, could test themselves, don't know what happens with that, but the parent might not know a thing about it unless there is some communications that Bobby picked up a test.
So what age bracket would you like that then? I don't, I personally, I feel ninth through 12th graders can do that and bring home a test, and be taught and trained to say, look, if you have a positive, this is what you do, you have the responsibility.
So you're more middle school, right, Ken?
Yeah, I'm just trying to say, you know, I would want the parents to know.
Yeah, plainly, it's a pretty good.
That the young person has got on a test, what they do with that test, I don't know.
Well, I'll work on that, and honestly, if it comes out to be more cumbersome, then, because I don't want to put more burden on the nurses either, to be honest, so if it ends up being more cumbersome, I'll probably just opt out of that and just say, no, parent wants to do it, call and, call and do it, and just only do ninth through 12 for pickup. So I want to make sure that it doesn't become something where it becomes a burden on the nurses' office.
Play it out a little bit, what happens if a kid in seventh grade goes home, tests positive, doesn't tell anyone?
Right, no, I understand, so we'll move forward, and we'll do six through eight, with a parent permission, parent notification.
Notification.
Perfect. All right. Face masks?
Still on testing?
Yes.
Looks like there's a bunch of stuff in the state guides around testing that we don't have mentioned on here.
What's that, Rob?
Recommendations and/or, it's super confusing, I'm not sure if there's requirements for testing post-exposure, right? So there's a litany of.
There's not at the moment, because I talked to Dr. Whalen, and she said that you're not required to test post-exposure, but you can.
Right, well, so anyway, there's, there's a list of recommendations for, you know, we're listing other things where things are encouraged, and we're not mentioning anything about testing post-exposure, there's some confusing stuff, though, at the bottom, under, where it's school exclusion, it says, when schools become aware of a failure to comply with recommended testing, then individuals who are not subject to COVID-19 vaccination should stay home for five days after exposure. That's right in the state guidance.
Yeah, and so we talked about this, there is a lot of confusion on the state document, the FAQ is a little bit clear, so then the state document, so is that from the FAQ or the state document?
That's from the state document.
The FAQ has a little bit more compu, clarification, that's superintendent, we were looking at that, and there is some questions still that we have regarding that.
So are we at least going to, I mean, there's, I think. So testing in school setting with reduced mask usage, there's an entire section dedicated to it, talking about consider testing immediately upon learning of exposure, at least five days after exposure, if not fully vaccinated, consider testing, that becomes like, should we at least be mentioning something on exposure, consider getting it, right? I just don't see that anywhere in our, in our document, it seems to be playing a big part in the state.
Where would you like it in the document?
I don't know, I'm not sure if that belongs under like testing, or, I mean, it's not really the term to school, because we're not excluding.
Do you think maybe, well, how about for now, you just put it testing, and exposure?
Yeah, if you just make a note, or even a reference to the post-exposure testing in the state guidance, just to.
Okay.
Just fill my case with this.
Okay. Moving on, or are we good?
Um, I, I don't know if it requires calling out, because I think it's part of the regulations, but we're continuing to track and report testing, right, and we have to.
We have to, New York State says that we still have to report.
Note that here or not, but.
No, it's a mandate.
Okay.
Yeah, so, that's the one that we still have to report back on the state, and that's a survey that goes out, it doesn't, this is a mitigation plan.
Yep.
So the mitigation plan is about how we stop the spread of that within the school, that is a reporting kind of aspect of it, so that's why I didn't put it into it, that was kind of my thought process behind it.
Sounds good.
So, face masks, are we good to move on?
So, so you have the second point, it says encouraged for those who may be exposed to COVID positive individual?
Yep.
Is that, is it different than what promised?
But that's for face masks, so I can put also the same thing for testing, as well.
Okay.
Yep. Again, this is coming from New York State Department of Health, Department of Health Guidance.
So it's encouraged as opposed to.
Correct, yep, yeah, you can, the only thing it's required for is the sixth through 10 of coming back from a positive COVID, yep, that's the only requirement for face masks Yep. That's the only requirement for face masks at this time. All individuals should have the ability to choose to wear a mask, create criticism, and that goes both ways. That's for people who choose not to or people who choose to. And masking may be optional, unless universal masking implemented by state or local health officials. Questions? And the mask flyers from Department of Health should.
So we can't turn on the mask and we can't turn off the mask.
Correct.
It's just.
That is Department of Health.
And if we were to try, we would get ourselves.
I don't think we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like if we just sat here and said. It's just not a thing.
Um, so I, I have a mask question related to the exposure. There, there's a section in the FAQ, um, talking about, there's, there's, I guess, the whole, like, should is optional, but it's more so than the, uh, what, what encourage, right?
It's recommended.
There should.
It says required, recommended, and should.
Right.
So should is on the bottom of the recommended.
Should's below recommended.
I believe so.
Should feels like you should as opposed to like, well, we kind of recommend.
What's your question?
So anyway, uh, it, it, under school exclusion, we're not, we're not excluding people anymore. Um, but exposed or potentially exposed individuals do not leave school and should wear a mask and test, test as recommended. There's a, it goes on though to say, if schools become aware that individuals who shouldn't be masking and testing are not doing so, efforts should be made to educate those individuals and their parents and guardians. So do we have a, are, are, are we sending, I, I think the expectation here is if they're, on the, the state, the way I'm reading it, let's say a whole classroom is exposed. Everybody should be wearing a mask, not required, but should, if there are people not masking, we should be sending some sort of communication with parent guardians saying.
We're going to talk about that.
You're not masking, but you know.
No, so I'm not going to be the mask police. I want to, I want to kind of be clear on that. I mean, we have to get back to a point where we're going to teach our kids, we're going to work on equity, we're going to work on all those other things. And if we, if we like, oh, your kid's not wearing a ma, or they should be wearing a mask and they're not, like, we have to do an initial modification. We have to watch it and we've got to work with Department of Health. But I don't think we can be like the police of saying, oh, they were supposed to do that, because I don't want it to be the teacher's responsibility to then focus on that.
No, I shouldn't be saying that anytime. I, I just, you know, I guess this little paragraph concerns me in, in the state guidance, we're not at all worried about.
Well, we're going to send that home when we send home notifications that I want to talk about and get some more clarification on that. About how we're then going to like encourage people and, and educate them as per what the guidance states.
Okay. But our, our attorneys, for example, will be fine with us not doing the stuff that's in, in here if it's a.
Those are shoulds. They don't have to be done, they're not a requirement. It's up to the board if they want to move forward and doing any of the shoulds in it.
Okay.
It, it's very confusing.
What you're saying, mask? You're going to be recommending what the Department of Health is saying, period, on mask?
Yes.
And that it is not.
Yeah. If they say, Department of Health says, as Rob said, if there was an exposure, they should mask.
Right.
Right? So I'm going to tell people, hey, you know, the OJ said you should mask, but I'm not going to require them to do that.
Which you should not require them to. Okay. Thank you.
If it's required, you're exceeding your.
Right. Exactly.
Right. You can't do that.
But you should.
It's very, it is, it is. It is, it is a little confusing. Again, I think also working with our Department of Health is the most important thing as we go through this. And just like everything else that we've done for the past few years, not everything is set in stone the first time you do it. You have to continually evaluate it and look at it and work with the Department of Health and have it change as it changes together. So there'll be more clarification. We'll get more clarification probably tomorrow on this, you know, but, you know, just, it's the way it works.
And don't worry, I have a question on a must one you have to do.
All right, awesome.
Where are all these questions when you put it out?
All right. So social distancing indoors, um, three feet. So, you know, at this point, you know, we're three feet in the classroom, you know, six feet is where our lunches are, you know, for three feet in classrooms at this point, it should be, it's move, let's just move back to three feet when possible.
Can we change to the one?
What's that? Yeah, it is. It goes back to three feet across the board.
Under this?
Yeah. Social distancing is three feet.
Three.
That's where we are. Yeah.
When practical.
When practical. That means that it can be below three feet.
Correct.
But when practical, we're going to try to get three feet. Health screening, um, you know, again, I think this is important. That was the one thing that the kid said to me the very first time I asked, was the number one thing we can do is if you're sick, stay home. If you're sick, test. You know, a kid said, I just want to make sure that if someone's sitting next to me, they've done the thing to keep me safe. And that's not even just for COVID, they're just saying for anything, if you're sick, stay home. So, I mean, that was from the kid's own mouth, which I, you know, I was listening to that. Um, and again, I put it in here and you'll see it repeated over and over again, if an individual has positive, notification should be made to the school nurse, principal, and must report to ACDO. Moving on for six. It's ongoing. Hand washing, hand sanitizer, and respiratory etiquette, um, encouraged and expected. We'll continue to post up signs. Um, our students, they made some great recommendations about sanitization stations in the room, so if they want to wipe down a desk at their choice, they can. Um, so we have sanitization stations, they should be in every room at this point, so, um, that's good. Contact tracing and quarantine, you do not have to do it. Um, but we are looking at notifications, this is a conversation that I'd like to have with the board. Um, four notifications of positive cases, uh, I can't speak anymore. Positive cases in the classroom. You know, we're looking at for our K-5 buildings, to go back to similar what we did for lice, strep throat, and things like that, where we sent home a classroom notification. Dating there was a positive case of strep throat in your classroom. There was a positive case like, by the way, which we have not had this year because of the social distancing. So elementary schools usually have lice, you know? Yeah, have not had that. Um, no, 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 no lice. We've had strep throat. Um, so for K-5, that is one that we want to do. It gets trickier when you go into grades six through 12, because the contacts change exponentially. And it gets more difficult. So if I were going to send home a classroom notification to somebody saying you were in a class with a positive person, that could be 100 students. And then they could get a duplicate, a duplicate one, or it could change. So it becomes more difficult. Um, currently, we post up on the website that we have how many positive we have for the day. Recommendation is, instead of doing just, you know, one for the middle school, zero for the high school, we could put the grade level. Problem being is sometimes ninth graders in classrooms or 10th graders, you know, or ninth grader or 10th, classrooms or 11th graders. So it does become difficult. Um, I could do a case by case. I think it would almost be impossible to do for grade nine through 12 well. Um, even sixth grade, the kids move around a lot, so it's, it, you know, not all of them are together all day like elementary school. Um, thoughts?
I think adding the grade level, you said that's, that's not hard.
No, it's not.
Yeah. I, I've seen other schools do that.
Just post the grade level.
And there was something, was it, I think I saw Bethlehem did something where they said the, the like extraprogramular activities that may have been affected or something.
Oh.
And it was, there's just a pretty neat, uh, neat first thing.
Hey, heavy.
And, and what about buses?
So buses, right now, we don't have a notification plan. I can do a bus notification though.
Wouldn't at this point, if the entire bus would wear masks anyway?
Right.
So the previous signs.
Right.
Let me tell you, do one, but is that hard?
So I can. Again, what's happening is you're going to have duplicate announcements, right? So we can send one out for Route Eight and hopefully we have the right emails for Route Eight, Jim. But those kids for Route Eight might also have one already for their classroom, so we can do it for the buses. Um, but again, the buses, you're doing a full bus notification place for, you know, a smaller group of students. Um, and we're always doing notification for immunocompromised, um, students. So we do have a list of immunocompromised staff and students. Immunocompromised?
Okay.
Sorry, I've been doing a lot of talking. So, um, but we're still, we're doing that as well. So, you know, let's say there was immunocompromised student or adult that came in close contact, we would absolutely tell them right away. Um, you know, that there was one as well. Any other questions on that? So I'll do nine, 12, I'll look at doing a bus, and six through 12, I'll do grade level, and we'll do K-5. Okay? Staying home when sick, uh, returning to school, working protocol. Those are basically the same as they have been. Nothing has changed on that. It's the same guidance.
So the, the start, this one, I have a question. It, it feels, and, you know, in some of the letters that I have, it felt a little bit, this wish you were too, this is maybe a little less, you know, like, the, the middle school, high school letter went out, I'm just giving. Be obvious the way I read it, where, oh, it's okay to go to school sick, but you shouldn't, but, uh.
We'll be clear, as is stated, don't come to school sick.
Do not come to school.
And the testing is still there. If you have symptoms that are similar to COVID, you can, like, you have to test.
So you do, that, that was my, so under the must, it's you must test, or, I mean, if you don't test, you have to stay out five days indoor mask.
Right.
Um, can be listed, you either, some, it says pursuant to DOH regulations, I guess.
You want to listen to symptoms?
Well, no, 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 not like that. Just saying, like, right now, reading this, I, I wouldn't know that it's you have to test if you're sick. It just says pursuant to, pursuant to DOH regulations, and it says students and staff are instructed to stay home from work. Rather than instructed, can be stayed required.
So I was following suit in what other districts have put, and also DOH, I was following suit in what other districts have put, and also DOH had. Um, the one thing I'll state is that I will put it in there, but I'll also say pursuant to DOH, so if DOH changes that, it automatically changes on the expectation.
As long as the communication going out to parents or whatever.
The 36 hours and the, the five days.
Is that, you know, this is what you have to do in terms of that.
Yep. So 36 hours for a home test. So do the 36 hours for home test or antigen test to come back. And, and just be clear on that, that a bullet to it?
Uh, it's.
Worrying, eh?
Okay. So, got it.
Question about the tutoring, is that the instruction, is that still going on?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been great.
If you have COVID symptoms, and COVID symptoms can be the sniffles at this point, so yes. Unless you have a pre-existing condition that's already documented, so, you know, someone has.
Or nine.
Yeah, yeah. Or nine.
Right, right.
Go ahead. Our cleaning disinfection are pretty much there. Excuse me. Ventilation and air quality has not changed. Um, Albany County Health Department actually did a survey asking us about HEPA units and filters. So they might be supporting school districts with some in-room, um, units, but that'll be more information to come on that. Print or choice, uh, transportation is the same. We are still doing seating charts. Um, I'm rushing a little bit because I feel like, you know, some of these are the same and haven't really changed that much. Higher risk athletic and sport. I know that, but we still have a whole meeting to get to. Um, higher risk athletic and sports are pursuant to New York State Department of Health, ACDOH, NIFISA. Um, vaccination is encouraged for all participants, it's not required. Um, you know, we could always go back and, and visit it at this point, but here, I was just thinking that we have enough tests, we didn't have enough tests in the beginning. And, you know, we could test everybody five times a week at this point, but the many tests that we have from the state, it's been great. Um, so higher risk sports, it's just vaccination, um, encouraged for all participants when, you know, and if it goes high, I still would recommend encourage. Um, other higher, higher risk student activities, same idea, HEPA safeguards such as bell coverings for wind instruments shall be followed. That was one I hadn't asked the board about. Um, I was asked to not have bell covers on for students, uh, for instruments. Bell covers basically are just a screen that go over the instrument.
Do you think to go wear a mask?
No. So I don't know that answer, right? I did ask if the projections up. My thought process is that it's a layer of protection that's already there. It impacts the sound a little bit, but you're not doing a performance, it's a practice. I would say at performances, bell covers can go away. Some schools have it, bell cover optional, and some schools have it, uh, bell cover mandatory. I have to be honest with you, I don't see either way.
Is this one of those things where it's really not impact to the person playing it, it's just not that big a deal or you will survive after?
I think so. I mean, the problem's going to be is if you start seeing spread within band, and it's because you have brass players right next to each other, you could say, well, is it because of the bell covers? And you've already taken it away. My recommendation would be is keep it on for a couple of weeks. And then if we're seeing spread or not, then take it off. So, you know, as I've been explaining to the kids and everyone I talk to is, you don't want to take every variable out at one time, right? You want to, you want to do it slowly. So you're taking the mask away, you've already done, now you're doing social distancing, let's see this, how it plays out, and then after that, take away the next layer on top of it. So I'm either way, I've done, honestly.
I'm just curious whether it's that's going to be the reason.
Because the sound, they say the sound can be dampened a bit, but you're not doing it for a performance. I would say performance taking right on. Best maximize.
But if we're willing to take more of that performance, why would we keep them on a, I mean, I, that's just my, I'm not.
So mask optional?
Should.
Should, should. I like should, but.
Yeah, we'll do optional.
Is, is everybody good with that? I mean.
It's. Okay, yeah. Yeah. Listen, I've seen it on plans that people are using and it's been both and it's been about 50/50, so.
If you wait a week.
Optional. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. School use of facilities, um, at this point, you know, we're, we're yellow and green. Um, you know, I think we just go back to following our use of facilities regulations. Questions, comments?
I agree. I mean, every contractor has, organization's going to follow.
Right. Yep. Yep. Every contractor at this point forward will always have the health and safety component built into it. All right. Excuse me. And I also, you know, I put in a framework for, um, attendance. So as you can see, if you're in yellow, it gives me a nice wide range to be able to look at, so 30 to 75%. You know, so that was one thing that, you know, I was saying is, we're yellow, next week we have, two weeks from now, we have our, our play. I mean, I'd love to be able to have 70% capacity in here, you know, or 50% capacity. Um, it really is, but that's where we are. It says 30 to 75% is where we, we have it, and I would be looking at the weekly trends. Um, but, you know, automatically, I think we would automatically go to 50%. Thoughts on the spacings?
Do you have the flexibility to determine?
That's kind of what I would want in this, so I can look at the other data and say, you know, if we're seeing zero cases, you know, why would I do 55%? Why couldn't I do seven? You know, and, you know, we have the play coming up, you know, they pay royalties, they do all their other things. It's a great opportunity for our community to come back out. Um, so I would like to have the capacities back up to the best of our ability.
I agree with that. Does anybody have any? Oh, yeah, of course.
April, yeah, but this one is high school. High school play is two weeks from now. Go ahead. Yes, Chris.
I'm saying in general, I guess, you know, the parents have the option to not come if they're not comfortable, how, I mean, the one honesty is you're putting performers at the most valuable, which is, feel whatever you said, possibly present.
But I mean. It impacts the, the directors more because they're going to be advocating for more performances. And as a former music person, you know, you want to play to a live audience. You know, you want that, the energy in that field.
I'm more like if they're concerned about the numbers, exposure.
I think we could ask the kids about it. I know that the, the play students would definitely want as many possible here as possible. Um, and then one thing that I didn't talk about here, and we can talk about facilities, but I think I need to just tend to have the conversation now, is, um, concession stands and flowers at events. So we were limiting, we did not have concession at all, um, at, at events. You know, it still limits it. I mean, if you have people standing around, it can, do you want to have them standing around having concession? Is it a grab and go? Do you want flowers at events? I mean, how much more flexible can I be? You know, or should we still kind of be rigid in that regard?
Why would flowers, flowers like for senior games and things?
Well, like for the plays where they, where they fill it out and put them in the vases and stuff.
Put them in the vase.
The fifth grade did a, a purchase them online and they're print them out, print out notes, so you might, you submit your notes in advance. So they did that in advance of it, which.
But I think so much of it is just random, like you come in and you're like, oh, I want to buy this kid flowers and put it in the vase.
It has one plus in that, um, grandparents and family members and loved ones.
In France.
Can do it from afar, but it definitely limits the joy of doing that, and it also causes, of course, the challenge of, what about the kids who don't get any, no one sees the empty vase?
Right.
And the empty vase to me is, is.
Well, you always buy and just go buy them.
I do.
And I do, I just.
I think the other reason, I think the most important reason is, why I'm even saying it is, if we're increasing the ability for people to be around each other for longer, right? That's kind of where I'm getting at, is if you're around the flowers, you have a group of people that are going to, they're going to mill around more than they would otherwise. But, I mean, our rates are low, you know, the, people are watching their symptoms, they have the ability to test. But, I mean, our rates are low, you know, the, people are watching their symptoms, they have the ability to test. I'm fine with it.
Or could you set up the flowers be done somewhere where there's a lot more space, like in the commons?
To space it out.
So put, yeah, like if, if flowers were being done in the commons and, you know, food would be.
Go down, yeah. I mean, you get the lot.
But we can, we can look at it, but how far is the board wanting? Are you comfortable with me kind of making a little flexibility and relaxing on that a little bit? Okay.
And I, concession.
So we can get back to some more normalcy. That's, I just want to confirm the comfortability. Um, I know where I stand on this. So, you know, I'm kind of like, let's watch the data. Let's see if there's any spikes, but right now there's not. And let's go from that point forward. Okay? Other than that, that's all I have on this.
Other volunteers and visitors just as instructions, normal school rules and protocols.
Yep.
I was assuming volunteers and visitors should not come to school sick either.
No, bro, that's normal protocols. Like, you shouldn't be here sick. Ever. Anything else on this or is the board with this? Do you want to move it to an adoption? For tonight, or do you want me to work on this some more and act on this for now?
That's good. So moved.
Get so moved. Yeah, we can adapt it.
Do it.
Let's do it. All right. Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice work, Mr. McDo.
Thank you. And I'm done talking for the night.
And I just wanted to add that I, again, that you worked with, well, the superintendents of Albany County and around. And that other districts are so consistent with what we're doing. And I think that's really important too.
Thank you. You have all the superintendents and the four county, um, Department of Health as well. So everybody's working together as a partner.
Yeah, so it makes, makes for something. Okay, thank you. So I was started 6:15. Wait, it's 4.1 minute of, minutes of regular reading. Do you have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, action items, 5.1 through 5.10. I'm going to, um, group those together. Stretchers report, personnel items. Let's see, we have to turn page. Lot of personnel items and. CSE recommendations. Bosie sublists, non-resident tuition requests, approved contract sale gift, eh, eh, approved 20, 22, 20, 23 school calendar. Memorandum of agreement with BTA, and there's one with UBB, um, and out of town field trip request. That sounds like music to our ears, like out of town field request. Hey, any questions on any of those, uh, action items?
Can I just say on the memorandum of agreement? This is an action that we're, I think, we take because there was a recognition that we weren't competitive as an employer. And it also.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, can I have a motion then? Move 5.1 through 5.10? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on here, old business. Okay, audit committee, we did not meet. We are meeting next month. April 4th, and what time would you like to start that, LG? Okay, so please note, 6 o'clock, April 4th will be audit committed prior to our regular meeting. Okay, curriculum committee, Tim, chair?
Our last meeting was January 25th, and I recorded on that February meeting. And our next meeting is on March 22nd. I'll report next time to meet. And I've noted that I would like to have a discussion regarding foreign language. Uh, additions to our curriculum, or at least the potential, uh, when we meet next time.
Thank you. Solis committee, Rob, chair?
I'm trying to abbreviate it version because we've been here a long time. Uh, scoreboard project, uh, satellite fields, uh. Going, uh, we were having folks come in to balance HVAC system. Uh, looking at quotes for AC and ASAM, uh, tennis courts, talk a little bit about that, right? Some of the stuff uncovered in, in budget. Uh, middle, we call it middle school vestibules, uh, which is something we'll secure entrance there with some, uh, is that smart school fund or safety fund, one of the grant funds, right?
That's actually capital project funds left over.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, for phase three, but we would also use them, safety funds and other things to offset it.
So drainage project, the elementary school fields, we've probably talked about that a bunch of times. Um, vendors are going to America, giving us options for camera system. Uh, all the large area, vendors have valve filter, talking about filtration, something like that, and a number of team filters, everything else is 11 at a minimum. Um, and, uh, use of facilities, uh, I think some of that is now moved. We talked about radiation plant. Uh, we had, uh, volunteer request for, we got some of this, the budget, softball, baseball, satellite field, cactus stuff. And big one, the, uh, potential project, we talked about that last night, so I. That's it.
That's all right. Thank you, Rob. Policy, Rachel, chair?
Yep, we met shortly after our, our board meeting, that, for the week of our board meeting, and that was meeting in February. And we discussed policy related to foreign exchange students. Um, we have some language on that. We learned about the differences between, um, different types of foreign exchange student documentation. So we have some policy that we're looking at, uh, finalizing to bring before the board as an option to add to our policies. We also discussed some things related to COVID, um, and how that fits in policy, and all that is relatively moved. And we also discussed the idea of tutoring and individual help and how that works. Um, we don't really have a policy for it and what do we want to do about that. So we don't bring anything before the board this month, but, uh, probably next month we'll have a pile of potential first reads. Um, or amendments to existing policy.
Thank you, Rachel.
And we meet on Wednesday, if anyone's interested to check out. I think we're still posting.
Okay, so I'm going to take 7.1 approval of proposition for purchase of buses and that, Jim, that includes that.
That's the transportation, that's all.
It includes the plow, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, um, can I have a motion to move that? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have to sign something at the end of that?
I was going to say, and now that we voted, I will start this. Please, board members don't leave without signing this, okay? Let's start it that way. Okay, yeah, all right, yeah. Okay. 7.2 approval of proposition read student board member. Um. We've had thorough discussions about this and this will be to, if voted positive today, this will allow this to go on the main ballot for voters. Vote to see if a student should be part of the board. So that's exciting. So can I have a motion to move it?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so put it on the ballot. Yay. Okay, um, acceptance of donations. We have some generous donations here. Um, can I have a motion to move, accept?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's like, okay, Jim, okay. And then opportunity for the board to be heard?
I didn't mention this during the, the good of the order, but I wanted to say that I was able to go to the first concert I've been to for more than two years. The, um, fifth grade had a concert, they were playing instruments. I don't remember if they had bell covers on. I know my daughter has a bell cover on her, um, but it was fantastic. And I also saw some clips from, uh, the concert that the high school did. And the energy there was, it was magical. So I, I'm just very honored to have been able to see those things and see those children. Learn, students learning and enjoying music. And I appreciate all the work with musical staff and everyone has done. And also that the custodians have been doing to move the seats and all of the things that need to go in. I hope everyone can enjoy those.
Anything else from board members? Okay, I just want to thank the community. Um, we're here without masks on tonight, but for your comments either way. And for, um, the community to stay like in a very positive light through the last two years. So, thank you. And we hope that people continue to come to board meetings and give us their comments. Um, we do listen. So with that, um. Let's see, we have dates to remember. Next board mem, meeting will be Monday, April 4th, and we hope back in the LGI. And we will start with audit committee at 6 o'clock. And so may I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh. Sorry, I realized it's public not position.
We already did public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, that changed like about a year ago. Okay? That's okay, that's okay. Yeah. Now, we, last meeting, we, we, you know, we said we'd be having the public comment, only not emails.
Okay.
Only because people can now come to the meetings live. We did that to accommodate.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just something about the meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And if you ever want to just write emails in general, you can. All right, have a good evening, everyone. Okay, you guys have to sign this. We, does it have to be black?